Good evening. I call this meeting to order. February 4th, 2019, of the work session for the York County School Board. Mr. Mitford's out of town. He's traveling. And Mr. Anderson had some work commitments, so they're unable to attend the meeting tonight. So we have several presentations, and we'll move right ahead into them. And the first one relates to our gifted program. So Dr. Shandor, would you share that information?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, Board members. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Christina Head, Associate Director of K-12 Academic Services. She's going to provide an update to the Board on the purpose, development, and timeline, the upcoming evaluation of the gifted program to include the K-7 service delivery model and gifted curriculum. Ms. Head.
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will update you on the upcoming gifted program evaluation. As you're aware, last May, the meeting discussion led the Board to suggest evaluating the gifted program delivery model for possible options to increase instructional time. In response to this request, a program evaluation will be conducted with the goal of maximizing learning experiences for gifted students. A formal evaluation of our gifted program has not been done in over 20 years. I consulted with gifted program directors in our region and in Northern Virginia to obtain information about components of their gifted evaluations. The information provided was used to develop the scope of services for the evaluation. I also reached out to the Director of Gifted Education at the Virginia Department of Education for suggested evaluation components as well as recommendations of external evaluators. Based on the recommendations, these are the major components of the gifted evaluation, specifically to evaluate the service delivery model to determine if it's providing the most effective and efficient delivery of instruction for our gifted students in York County School Division. In addition, to evaluate the gifted curriculum to determine alignment between the core curriculum. Also, to evaluate the instruction models in the Extend Center and the gifted cluster classrooms at the home schools. And to evaluate the effectiveness of YCSD-provided professional development for gifted cluster and Extend teachers. This slide displays the development of the gifted program evaluation. It originated with the research of other school divisions, resulting in the development of the scope of service components of the program evaluation. The scope of services was sent to four recommended program evaluators for proposals, and the proposals were reviewed for selection. The evaluator was selected by utilizing a modified decision-making process developed by Trego Ed. This process provided a weighted value to each criteria and scored the candidates accordingly. The selected candidate is Dr. Carolyn Callahan, a professor at the University of Virginia. She developed the UVA Graduate Program in Gifted Education. She's also the Associate Director of the National Research Center on the Gifted and Talented. Dr. Callahan has authored more than 225 articles on topics of gifted education and has completed over 70 gifted program evaluations. On this slide, you see a timeline for the gifted program evaluation. The program evaluation will include an onsite visit this month, and the analysis work will continue through the end of March. YCSD gifted information was sent to Dr. Callahan. Some examples of this information are: Extend curriculum and schedules, transportation information and student travel time, and surrounding school divisions, service delivery models, and their programs. The evaluator will review all relevant material and develop data collection instruments. On February 20th through 22nd, there will be an onsite visit from the evaluator. Dr. Callahan will meet with principals, Extend teachers, gifted cluster teachers, GAC parents, and the Five-Year Plan Committee, and parents of gifted students, as well as central office staff and school board members. She will also conduct observations in the Extend Center and in elementary gifted cluster classrooms, and also middle school advanced course classrooms. By the end of March 2019, the evaluator will submit a final evaluation report of findings and a tiered plan of recommendations. The tiered plan of recommendations will provide next steps for the program with both short-term and long-term options. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide you with a brief update on the gifted program evaluation. At this time, I welcome any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
One quickie. And you may have said it early on. Have we evaluated our program in the past?
As far?
We know of.
The history that we look back on with the help of Ms. Sarah Haywood is not in over 20 years.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, so it's time. Okay. Fantastic. Thanks.
Come on, it's great.
Well, thank you for that update, Ms. Head. Appreciate that information. So we're going to move on to our next topic. Dr. Shandor will share information relating to Engaged In in YCSD Career Connections.
Thank you. It was easy for you to say.
That was easy, yeah, it was.
All right. So Dr. Cagle, Dr. Karen Cagle, Associate Director of Educational Technology and Innovation, is now going to share the launch of Engaged In YCSD, a new database designed to provide parents, community members, and local businesses with the opportunity to share their career experiences or expertise with our students. This database will help support multiple objectives in the strategic plan connected to career awareness, exploration, and experience. I'll turn it over to Dr. Cagle.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Well, good evening, Mr. Richardson and Board members. I'm really excited to share this project with you. We shared it with our parents last week and with principals in a memo, and I noticed that one of our Board members has already gone on and experienced it, so I hope the rest of you are as excited when you see it tonight. So, to get to our new database, we actually have, it is on our banner on our York County School Division website, and just as Dr. Shandor said, this database will help support many of our strategic plan objectives that focus on career readiness. So you can get to the database by using the banner, or there are other links on the main page as well. So this is our Engaged In YCSD webpage, and we explain the purpose, the rationale for this database, and really getting our parents, our community members, our businesses involved in helping us support our kids to be career-ready. And so, if you want to know how you can get involved, we have listed on this page several ways with explanations. So, you know, depending on if you're interested in the time commitment or what's involved, the page will show you how you can do that. And if you see here, we have internship and mentorships on this page. I did that presentation in December, and we talked about how are we going to find the places for kids to do internships and mentorships? Well, this database has already started giving us a lot of contacts, so I'm really excited about that. So to register, and so pay attention because you're going to all have to go in and register at some point, okay? So you click on the link, and you have to set up an account to begin with. So where it says "Register," here you click, and your email becomes your username. So I'll just type in, if I can type correctly, my email address. And while I'm typing, I encourage you to share this with businesses that you know of or community members. I shared it with my family. So I'm just going to make up a password here. I'm going to confirm that. And then you register. So you're only halfway there, okay? So once you register, then you can go log in and complete all the information that's necessary for us to have what we need to find the right fit for you in a school. So using my email account, I should have practiced my typing. And this is what the page, the form looks like. So where you see a red asterisk, you have to complete that field. If you don't, it will not save. And you'll see, I'll give you an example of that when we get closer through the presentation. Your phone number, be sure to include the dashes in here. And I'm going to leave job title blank for right now, so that I can show you what happens if you leave something blank. And I'm only going to type a few words here, but we want to make sure that when you're providing a job description, to be very descriptive about what you can share with a classroom or with a school, so that, again, we can find the best fit for you. The next section are our 16 career clusters, and there is a link that will lead you to the Virginia Department of Ed website on the main page, where you can find out more about these career clusters, but they're pretty self-explanatory. Now, I work in education, so I'm going to select that. But suppose a part of my job included hospitality and tourism. I could check more than one. How you can get involved, check as many boxes as you'd like to, to get involved with our We also ask you what zones you're most familiar with, most comfortable with, or closest to that you want to participate at their career fairs or be guest speakers at their schools. So you can select one or up to four. And the days you're available, again, you can select as many as you'd like, and the times of day as well. We put this text box here because sometimes there may be a time of year that you aren't as available. For instance, maybe an accountant might not want to present this time of year because they have, this is a very special time of year for them, that's very busy. So they will put it on there if they don't want to present at a certain time. And then, are you a York County School Division, a parent of a student? Yes or no? Are you a graduate of York County? These questions are very important for our big picture, because this is just one piece of our whole Career Connections Plan that we have going on. So we may have some questions to ask some of our graduates or some of our parents on future projects, or we may need their help in other ways. So those two questions are very important. And if there are any additional information that you want to provide, if you have a website or social media account, or anything that we may have left out in the form, you can put that information in this box. And it's very important that you hit submit, because if you don't, it will not save the information. So I hit submit, and it lets me know that I failed to put something in here. So make sure that you complete all the boxes. If I can go back down and hit submit again. Thanks for putting the information in, and it provides my contact if you have any questions. And then you can log out, and the great thing is you can log in at any time and make revisions. You can add, you can take away, anything that you need to do to update your profile. So we've had some success already. We have over 40 people who have already filled out the form in its entirety, and we have about 30 who have started filling it out. They went through the registration department. They haven't completed the form yet. So, and it's real exciting. All 16 career clusters are represented so far, and the responses that we've had, all of our school zones are represented, the responses we've had so far. So we're real excited about what this database offers. So do you have any questions?
This is great.
Where did you start out to get to this? You started from where?
On the webpage.
It's the main webpage?
Yes, on the main webpage. We have it on our Facebook account as well. There's a link there. And again, please share with as many people who you think might be interested in partnering with us to work on the strategic plan goals.
And we have asked principals that through their multiple communications that they have with their families to please share this information again, even though we did the Connect 5. We're going to ask principals to share with their staff, so that their staff can reach out to their spouses or other significant folks in their lives that might be interested in being part of that resource for us. And they also had the idea of creating, like, little business cards, so that when folks are out and about, they can hand those out to individuals, so that they can log on. And we'll be sharing it with our business advisory group this Friday, so that they can all log in.
We have a variety of careers. We have a neurosurgeon who's offered to come in. We have graphic designers. We have professors. We have all types of engineers, entrepreneurs. So far, we already are getting a robust collection of professionals.
And when I saw this, that we were going to be going over this tonight at the work session last week, I think it was Friday, I went on the website, I registered, and it took no time.
It doesn't take?
I did get the red box, because I didn't do the phone number right. I put the dashes in. But I had to go back and fix it. It was very simple. Took very little time at all, but I was excited to see that, especially that it works out with our strategic plan and getting those business members and leaders involved with what we're trying to do. So, perfect.
It's very exciting.
Well, this is something going through your retired teachers association to get them involved.
Great idea. That's a great idea. That's a wonderful idea. Once you start looking at it and talking about it, you think of all kinds of connections we can make. And in the phone calls I've gotten, because of my contact information on there, people are saying, "I've been wanting to do this, I just didn't know how," or "I didn't know how to get involved, so thank you." So we're getting really great response from it.
Great, great. Well, thank you, Dr. Cagle, for providing us with that information. Looking forward to hearing more in the future about it. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cagle.
So now, Dr. Shandor, would you update the Board on the last topic of our agenda, which is the FY '20 operating budget?
Yes, I have this presentation, and then Mr. Bowen has one item for discussion. All right?
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Richardson, Dr. George, and school board members. It's my privilege to present my FY '20 proposed budget. Before I begin, I want to thank Mr. Bowen again for leading the work in his second budget cycle with YCSD. I also want to thank our cabinet members, executive leadership team, our principals, school staff, and community members. All of these folks participated in the process of providing us information to guide this budget. I want to begin by sharing a few successes, as well as some areas that are challenging for us. So our team shared some of our school's successes with you this year during our strategic plan updates and during the joint retreat with the Board of Supervisors. So I'll briefly recap them now. So all 19 of our schools are fully accredited. As you can see, 88% of our third graders are on pace for pass rates for grade three reading. And this is important to note, because in 2014, we were at 76% there, so we've made some notable gains in that area. It's also worth noting that our fourth graders have the highest scores in the state in reading. We've also continued to see improvements in special education at the middle school level in reading. And since 2015, our graduation rate is up 2.3% for all students. And finally, we're proud of our students for earning the scholarships and awards that they do each year. But we also have some challenges. So I've shared with you, and Dr. Carol has shared some information with you related to the national and state teacher shortage. So I did want to give you some information this evening. So the 2018, 2019 critical shortage teaching endorsement areas in Virginia, I'm going to give you the top five. Number one is special education. Number two is elementary education pre-K 6. Three is middle education, grades six through eight. Four is career tech education. And five is mathematics, grades six through 12, including Algebra I. So there's clearly a challenge across the nation and the state. Some additional challenges that we have are changing student demographics, and on the slides to come, I'll share some information related to that. Maintaining competitive salaries for staff. We know that in YCSD, we've made some improvements since the recession, and we want to continue that trend. We've also had to face reductions at the state with state funding, which we know that's putting increasing pressure on the local government. And we've also shared some information involving increasing enrollment, and I'll share some data with you this evening around that as well. All right. So as I mentioned, Dr. Carol shared this with you earlier this school year, and this chart comes from well-respected educational researcher Linda Darling-Hamlin's 2016 study on teacher supply and demand in the U.S. Here, we see an estimated gap of 100,000 teachers per year, stretching out until at least 2021. And that's a little scary for everyone in the room. We also know that this challenge is across the country, as well as here. But also in YCSD, we continue to have vacancies for paraeducators, bus drivers, and custodians. Looking at our student enrollment, when Mr. Bowen presented this information in the budget outlook presentation, he reported that the county was recommending the division pay for a 200-student increase in our ADM. Since then, we've seen an increase over the last few months in enrollment. The county has increased our projection to 255 additional students for FY '20. The impact of the special education teacher shortage is compounded by the student growth in this area, where we are up more than 20%. The majority of that, 176 additional students with disabilities in the last four years. This continues to be a challenge for us fiscally and in recruiting special education teachers and paraeducators. In looking at our economically disadvantaged population, now this is students who receive free and reduced lunch. There's more than a 52% increase over the last 11 years. Finally, in taking a look at our English learner population, it has more than doubled in the last 10 years. All right, so we'll look at the FY '20 projected revenue changes. The state revenue is based on the governor's proposed budget, an increase of 5.67%. This is based on the projected enrollment and additional increases for compensation and supplemental per pupil allocation. There are no changes anticipated at the federal level, and the county administrator has indicated that 1.25 million is a working number for us to build this budget. And we also will decrease our reliance on the Revenue Stabilization Fund by $100,000. Board members, if you remember, a few years ago, we were at $900,000, then $600,000, then $300,000. So hopefully, in FY '21, we will reduce completely our reliance on the Revenue Stabilization Fund. So our total revenue increase is $5.1 million, so 3.63%. We always look to identify areas of savings as well when we're putting together our budget. Our staff attrition projection is $650,000. As we've shared earlier, we have transferred positions to the health care and workers' compensation reserve funds. And lastly, we have miscellaneous reductions in transfers for $43,000. This is for programs and services that are no longer being used or have ended up costing We utilize the same budget processes last year. We held community budget sessions at each of the four middle schools. Staff and community members had an online opportunity to submit suggestions. All 19 principals were asked to work with our staff and leadership team to provide input, and each department leader submitted budget needs. And you can see there, we had over 186 suggestions, a total just over $7.5 million. So after collecting all this information, input, and feedback, we conducted a comprehensive review of the submissions. The three themes that emerged are very similar to FY '19's priorities: instruction and learning, retention and recruitment, and compliance and safety. Let's take a deeper look at these priority areas, and I'll share my recommendations. Starting with instruction and learning, I'll start with the positions up there in the parentheses. The 10 teachers are directly related to the additional students that we'll have in the division next year. The 4.5 counselors, four of those positions are directly related to the governor's budget, which is to reduce the ratio between counselors and students in schools. And the .5 position will be at York High School, where we have been short .5 a counselor. The one social worker will bring our count up to five social workers. If you remember, Board members, last year, we added a social worker to bring us up to four. Now we'll have five. That was a Board priority, as well as staffing priority. The two reading specialists are FTEs, so will actually be a .5 at each of the middle schools to support reading instruction. The two paraeducators, again, are directly related to the increase in students next year. Two assessment compliance interventionists, if you remember, Board members, this was a position that was in the budget for many years in York County, but went away during the recession. Last year, we brought two of those positions back. We have one at Mount Vernon and one at Grafton-Bethel. This will be an effort to continue to support our elementary schools, so we're looking at adding two of those positions. Two job coaches, again, those are Board priorities, as well as high school principal priorities. We're looking at adding those positions, so I believe it'll be, Dr. got to be a .5 in each of our high schools, correct? That's a .5. So they'll be supporting the work of the internships and mentorships and that work at the schools. All right, so New Horizons. This increase is based on our three-year average of students participating in the career tech ed and governor's school programs. The Early College Program partnership with TNCC. This will provide high school seniors the opportunity to earn transferable college credits at a reduced tuition rate. Adobe has gone to a cloud-based annual subscription, so you can see the increase there. The Data Dashboard is a priority of the division and the school board, which will greatly assist our efforts in having data at our fingertips in order for staff to utilize comprehensive, real-time data to make decisions in the best interest of our students. And finally, the online evaluation tool. The current system simply is not meeting our needs. A new system will provide administrators with an effective and robust tool needed for classroom walkthroughs and formal observations. Continuing with instruction and learning, the first two items on here came from our elementary and middle school principals. So for example, these additional resources will provide additional collaboration between general education and special education teachers. The DODIA funds are for elementary and middle school high-demand clubs and the makerspace resources at the elementary schools. That's cost-neutral, because we'll be utilizing the funds from the DODIA grant. And finally, the stipends for school PR liaison to support school websites. This is going to be cost-neutral as well. All right, retention and recruitment. Our success and our students' success begins and ends with the dedicated, passionate, and committed employees of YCSD. It's critical that we continue to provide competitive compensation to keep and attract the very best. Goal three of the division's strategic plan includes two objectives: supporting competitive compensation for both licensed and non-licensed staff. As Mr. Bowen presented in January, we've lost a little ground with our licensed pay scale. This strategy of including both a step and a market adjustment will help address that. So you can see on the first line there, we're looking at a licensed staff 1.5% average, along with a licensed staff market adjustment of 1.6%. For non-licensed staff, earlier this year, the Board directed us to review our non-licensed scale. The recommendation for FY '20 reflects the work conducted by a division committee with guidance from an external consultant. So when you look at the non-licensed scale, we're looking at around an average of 4% increase based on the conversion of the non-licensed salary scale. The next item on there is to convert the program recruiting specialist. This was a position that we've had in the district. We want to convert that position, roll the recruiting specialist responsibilities into an HR associate director to support our human resources department. The associate directors and principal regrades are simply a part of the quadrennial review process. And for the last item, this stipend allocation would support supervision of graduate student interns in the field of speech pathology. This recruitment strategy aligns with interns being more likely to seek improvement in workplaces where they interned. Under compliance and safety, so the positions identified here on the top, on the first line, support instruction and learning, but state and federal mandates require this change for next year. The next item, we would like to include a division-wide text The next item, we would like to include a division-wide texting platform for staff to utilize when contacting families and students. This will enable record-keeping of the communications used and supports goal four of the strategic plan related to positive relationships with families. And finally, we would like to add stipends for the critical response paras. As you recall, we added four of these positions two years ago. The stipend will aid with retention. So to recap, you can see the total funds available, along with the expenses for each of the three priorities. You could also see this proposal contains no budget gap. Our bottom line is more than $145 million, a 3.63% increase from FY '19. This budget will enable us to continue moving forward with the work of the school division, specifically accomplishing the goals in our strategic plan. So the next steps, you can see the dates on there. The February 25th, there'll be a school board public hearing. Then the 11th, the school board work session. And then the 25th, the board will adopt the proposed budget. And then on the 20th, the school board adopts the operating budget. That concludes my FY '20 budget presentation. Available for any questions or comments at this time.
Two questions for clarification. Stephanie, this might be for you. The difference between early college program and dual enrollment, I don't know who ever wants to say.
So the early college program is a program that specifically, dual enrollment, we have a really difficult time with dual enrollment because of the requirements for it. Dual enrollment, for example, if you were going to teach English and a student was going to get credit for that, as a dual enrollment course, the teacher has to have not just a master's, but a master's in English. And so we have a great deal of difficulty, plus the requirements for dual enrollment are that if you teach a class, you can't mix. So every student in that class has to be dual-enrolled, which means you can only typically offer it as one period, and it might be 12 students that are interested, and so the other classes end up pressing up. The early college program is a program where we would have a certain number of students, and we have, in the budget request, identified 60 students. In the fall, they would complete their English and government requirements, and then in the spring, they would actually attend Thomas Nelson and take 13 or 15 credits at Thomas Nelson University. And the school division would pay for part of the coursework. 50% for all students, but students who were economically disadvantaged, free or reduced lunch, would pay less, the division would pay more for them, and they would pay less.
So those two programs really don't overlap, then?
Um, no, not, I mean, they do in that the students in the fall, who would be still in York County, those courses would be dual enrollment courses, and we would use our virtual high school program for that because it would be a small number at each school. And so you would have that as dual enrollment. But right now, our dual enrollment numbers are, Tony, do we have any dual enrollment numbers at present?
No, we have less than 10, and the only dual enrollment we have for students at New Horizons that are in dual enrollment courses and GovSchool, but in the division we do not.
Okay, thank you. The only other one is the critical response paras. I just, I know that's a, I think I know how that's defined, but I didn't know, even Dr. Cool, would you like to come address that? Come on off here if you don't mind, I don't want to put.
Yeah, I can try to answer it as well.
Okay.
You're fine. So our critical response paras, those are additional paras that are supervised by Matt Tamen, who is one of our behavior experts, gurus in the division. He provides training with them for behavioral management techniques, as well as data record-keeping. So we have, how many do we have?
I know we had, we had four. How many do we have now?
So we have seven now in the district, and they're deployed throughout the division where they're needed. So if there's a student in a particular school that is struggling with behaviors and they need some additional support, we'll put a critical response para there to work with the teacher, work with the student, take data, so that we can try to put some interventions in place so he'll be successful there, or provide key data to the IAP team so that they can address and make those decisions.
So would a regular para also serve as a critical response para? Is it a totally separate?
Totally separate, totally separate.
Critical response?
No, she's a teacher now.
She's a teacher now.
Well, were you as critical?
No, I was not.
Because I know we visited your.
I was in the multiple disabilities classroom.
Yes.
But a critical response para would, they implement the behavior plans, and so they have a very critical role with our students that are experiencing difficulty.
I know we had visited your class, I was curious if that's what you were. Okay, thank you. That's great.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
To speak to that, critical response para, I mean, the multiple disability paras already do receive a stipend. And there are some paras that are in a communication support class that do receive a stipend. So it's warranted that a critical response para receives stipends as well.
Thanks for weighing in.
I'm probably in trouble for bringing you into this.
Okay, Ms. Haywood?
No, we've had a one-on-one with Dr. Shandor and gone over the budget, so I would say for anybody at home that had questions, feel free to call, but we have gone over it with, ask a lot of questions on a one-on-one.
And I think I would like to add too, with the, I'm kind of excited about the early college because, you know, I was a proponent of the dual enrollment, but I understand the challenges there, and this is the next best thing, I think, to that. So I'm excited about that, the Makerspace, the compensation we're able to provide. I came into the board at a time where we're in okay budget times, we're good with them, okay. But before me, I know there were some challenging times where we had the recession, so I'm excited that we're able to do some things. So thank you, Dr. Shandor, very good budget report. So I think we have, the last thing on our topic is not, we finished with our presentations, but we do have an agenda topic that we need to discuss.
Okay, just for discussion, Mr. Bowman, Chief Financial Officer, he's going to provide an update to school board policy DLC expense reimbursements. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Ms. Richardson, members of the board. This evening, I bring to you expense, I'm sorry, school board policy DLC expense reimbursements or expedited review and approval. We'll ask you to approve it at the February business meeting. Sometimes in the absence of specific language, employees will often do what they think is the right thing to do. In this case, we are adding just one sentence to expense reimbursements to clarify about what qualifies as a reimbursable meal. In the IRS, this language comes from the IRS guidance, and it's basically saying that the meal expenses, reimbursements for meals are generally incurred on overnight travel. There are certain exceptions to that policy, but they are very rare, and for most of our circumstances and related travel, it would not apply to us. But we wanted to include this in policy because as of recent, we've had some questions come forward. The VDOE is taking a very hard stance on this. They are not reimbursing any meals for like day travel. So if an employee, excuse me, goes to Richmond for an all-day meeting and incurs a lunch there that's not part of a conference fee, but they're having to pay for it out of pocket, it is not reimbursable. So that's just adding that clarification. We will follow up with a superintendent's regulation that will include more of the IRS language that will be spelled out. But certainly, this will, adding this language will generally cause the employees to contact the finance department. We can provide some clearer guidance on them before they travel.
You know, and the reason I say that, I understand why we went to this, or we had to go this direction. But when I think of an employee going away for something, and we can't do lunch, that's the, you know, that's just something, that's par, I guess, par for the course, but you would think that there would be something along the way that we could compensate. But anyway, this way it is.
And I see the position of the point. I mean, I think the county deals with the same issues.
Yes.
Even the employee of the county, if you're leaving your home, you can pack a lunch if you're just going to Richmond. If you fly to Chicago, it's real hard to pack a lunch if you're staying in a hotel room and that sort of thing. So, all right, well, thank you for that interpretation or that information, Mr. Bowman. And I think that is it for this evening, right? All right, well, that was a short work session. So our next regular meeting will be Monday, February 25th at 7:00 p.m., upstairs in the boardroom here, if you call. And unless there's further comments, we'll adjourn the meeting, and have a great week and enjoy the nice weather, there's some warm weather coming, so enjoy this week, because it's probably going to be short-lived. We'll adjourn.